Good afternoon, everyone. This is Beast and it's Mayor Chaplin saying praise.
In the name of Allah, the most merciful, the most kind, we begin this gathering by appreciating the favors upon us bestowed by the one who holds the secret of all that is spoken and all that is meant. Do we hold his wisdom to question in the cold rooted frosts of a winter's night? Or are we pleased by his answer in the buzz surrounding the promising buds of May? When a companion of your messenger, oh Allah, Muhammad, asked him whether you are far or near, your reply immortalized in revelation was thus: "Is thus and will forever be thus." "When my bondsman asks about me, tell them that I am near." We ask you, the knower of all things, to surround us, us who are ignorant in most matters, with those whose hearts you have inspired with sincerity, experience and wisdom. Let us not mount our high horse for us to canter and stumble along the cracked crooked road. Let us not refer without reference and infer with prejudice and deny others that which we enjoy. Let us instead, oh Allah, look to a legacy of righteousness and to a depth in the meaning of what we leave behind. Let our competency in all matters prove our worthiness and make us worthy enough to sing your praise. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. There are no way plans for a fire alarm test. If you hear the alarm, please leave the building by the nearest exit. Please ensure mobile phones are switched off or on silent. Restrooms are located on all floors, but please ask a member of staff for details should require one. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will eventually be loaded onto the council's YouTube channel. Can I please remind all members that whilst we can disagree politically, please remain respectful to each other whilst dealing with council business? Now, members of the public, members and officers, you are reminded that under the openness of local government bodies' regulations 2014, the press and public may film, audio record, photograph unused social media whilst the meeting is in progress or part A items only. And as long as no disruption is caused to the meeting. Anyone filming is asked to focus their attention on elected members rather than other visitors. Now unfortunately, I have some very sad news to report. One of our dedicated employees, Janet Holswair, has died suddenly whilst in council service at the age of 59 years on 5th of April. Janet was a cleaning operative who had worked for the council for 32 years in various council buildings, but more recently at Argyle Road. On behalf of the council, I send my sincere condolences to Janet's family, friends and immediate work colleagues at this time. Can you now please join me for a minute silence as a mark of respect to our late colleague? Please, thank you. Thank you. Now we have three members who are retiring from the council this May. And that means this is their final full council meeting. Those members are councillor Mrs. Hayes, Aldridge and Shannon. To reflect on your service, I would like to bring in your respective group leaders or representative to say a few words. Councillor Brown, would you like to say a few words about councillor Mrs. Hayes?
With pleasure, Mr. Mayor. I'm sad that Nevis isn't here today. But obviously, this is being recorded, so I'm not out. Both her and Robert will watch this. Nevis spent 22 years on this authority. She was elected in 2022 for Brookfield. She replaced Dick Atkinson after he stood down from the ward after quite some years within the ward. Nevis actually came from a political family of Welsh heritage. Her mother Maya was a Labour councillor from 1980 to 2000, who was also the first chair of equal opportunities on the authority. And like Maya, Nevis became a teacher working for 23 years in a school in Blackburn, I believe. I always like to reflect on, as being a previous pop fan in my younger days, what was in the charts when Nevis got elected. And in the top 10, we had American soul singer Mary J. Blige with "No More Drama". I wondered if Nevis was coming to the right place, expecting No More Drama coming to Preston City Council along with the Preston Labour Group. But we were delighted to have her in 2002. Overall, she sat on 20 committees and outside bodies and she enjoyed particularly being on planning and taxi. She had roles of heritage and was a safeguarding champion. And she also joined the authority in 2002. And it wasn't easy for women in all parties really, because we were quite a male dominated culture. And obviously, on our side, we moved forward since then. So delighted to have her. The Brookfield, she worked alongside Jonathan Satzenner, who's still with us. The late John Brown, a character in himself. Phil Corker and very recently Neve, who joined us in 2023. 22, I think it might have been. She was very involved in case work in the ward and took a great interest in supporting Brookfield residents as she attended many community meetings. She was also really supportive of many initiatives of the last Labour government, especially Sir Charles Startle. And I remember a budget that we had within our Labour group in discussion. And Nevis put forward improving street life in parks and open spaces. And the intention of that was rightly to increase women's safety within Preston. Nevis is someone who has not spoken awful lot in the chamber. She's more happy working behind the scenes and working hard behind the scenes, which she's done very effectively as a ward councillor. And she also lived in the old Talcott Ward with Robert and her daughter Nevis. And I became a family friend. There's quite a few jokes in the Labour Party at the time, because there's myself, Robert, and the late Peter Rankin who represented the ward. You cannot come across three very different individuals. And we actually agreed on absolutely nothing all the time. There was actually a standing joke that we might starve because we'd argue over how to use a tin opener to open a can. And that led to some differences of opinion due to our different personalities, including one where I was actually banished from the Boswell household having a dispute over postal vote letters. And Poo and Nevis had to witness all that. However, with older age, I'm getting more relaxed, as is Robert. And I was lucky though to be able to attend her daughter's wedding last year in Clitherow. And they're now both grandparents as well. So I want to thank Nevis and I'm sure everyone's going to join us across the chamber for the contribution over these years in what is sometimes difficult times for the people of Brookfield and enjoy the extra time available in her retirement and spend more time with her family, which is obviously the most important thing to her. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. And now councillor, Mrs. Swittem. I invite you to say a few words about councillor Aldridge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Geoff has decided to step down after being a fantastic Grayfriars councillor for three years. He did not have any background in politics when he joined us, but he threw himself wholeheartedly into the role. He was definitely a master of all skills and no matter what committee he was on, he's always given 100%. He could be relied on to cover any committee and do his homework. He particularly loved planning and he gained so much knowledge about all the planning issues. He was also our groups expert on World War One and military history. So we're wondering whether he's now thinking of setting up his battlefield tours, which is of great interest to him. Funny enough, we also have an outstanding veteran standing in Grayfriars this time and they both get on immensely. I'm really sad that Geoff can't be here today, but I wish him well for the future and so does our group. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And now, can I now bring in councillor Darby to speak on councillor Shannon, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First things first, I have to apologize that there's only myself here from my group. Councillor Potter had the temerity of having a birthday and had a birthday party at the weekend. And well, I think it's safe to say, most of us don't miss social distancing, but perhaps it wasn't a bad idea on that occasion. But anyway, so we're just down to the two of us. We've had a number of family dynasties across all three parties over the years, one of which we've just mentioned in fact. And the Shannon dynasty is no different and has made your own impact. You joined the council in 2019 with no direct person that you're inheriting from as Cadley Ward went from two, two members up to three members with the changing boundaries. But you very quickly stepped outside of the shadow of your father through thorough scrutiny in council and committees and making your name for yourself as being a very well liked and very well spoken and thought through councillor. You've brought in some wonderful exposed knowledge to the council in areas such as cooperatives, perhaps more usually Labour's domain. But you've done very well in educating us about that. You've done an awful lot of excellent work over the years representing the people in Cadley Ward alongside your colleagues. I will say, it's been very useful having a trained psychiatrist in the group and perhaps it's something the other groups might like to try at some point in the future. We're all going to miss you from our group, but I'm sure from across the chamber going forward. You've brought an awful lot to our group, an awful lot to the council. And I wish you all the very best as you head north and get married in June. Yes, June. Thank you very much. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you all. And can I wish all the retirees the very best and thank you for the service you have given to the people of Preston? Also, very good luck and best wishes to colleagues standing in the forthcoming elections. Also, this is my final ordinary full council meeting of mayoral year. What a dream. And I would like to take the opportunity to thank everyone for your support throughout my time in this honourable role. Without your support, believe you and me, this was impossible for me to perform what I've done. I've enjoyed every minute of it. So thank you all. Thank you. Now, depending how we... Now, depending how we progress today, I may adjourn to take a short comfort break, but we will see how we proceed. Item number two, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Can members indicate if they have any discloseable pecuniary interest or personal and prejudicial interest in the items being discussed on the agenda? No. Right. So item number three, minutes of a meeting of council held on 29th of February 2024. Are members happy that I signed the minutes as a correct record? Thank you. Item number four. Thanks. Item number four is questions from members of the public and we have two questions submitted. The first one is from Mrs. Savannah Double, who is here with us today. Can I remind you, Mrs. Double, that once you have asked your question and it has been answered, you are entitled to ask a supplementary question as long as it relates to the original. Mrs. Double, can you now please ask for your question?
Our radio Preston friendship with Palestine statement dated the 13th of March with shock, horror and great sadness. You say, "As a city, we have witnessed the unfolding of events in Palestine and the wider region." I am confused as to the omission of the words Israel, Judaism, Jews, synagogue in the entire statement while describing events in the Middle East. You fail to mention that you would also endeavor to bring Israelis, 200,000 of whom are displaced due to the war, to our city to talk about the horrors of the 7th of October. Many hostage families are still dealing with the trauma and waiting desperately for their return from Gaza. You mentioned faith covenant and twinning and as far as I know, you haven't consulted either of them. Statements as important as these are surely to be drafted in consultation with all of those who are affected. At a time when antisemitism and anti-Jewish hatred is at the highest level in UK, what will you as the council do to foster good relations and friendship with all people in Preston, including the Jews?
Savannah, thank you very much for the question. I first want to start by reiterating our horror of all the deaths in the region of all innocent people. As an authority, we've made statements often through the mayor expressing our support for all communities and our revulsion at the deaths of all innocent victims of this terrible conflict. We clearly and unequivocally condemn the violence and deaths inflicted on the people of Israel as well as the ongoing deaths of civilians in Gaza. This remains our view as an authority. Our stated intent to explore the option of friendship with a Palestinian town was a direct response to an approach from the community. We welcome to dialogue with all our communities and we welcome a discussion with the Jewish community on this matter. As councillors, the amount of correspondence and inquiries we've received on this matter has been unprecedented for us in recent months. And we aim to respond based on humanitarian values and international law, especially with our status as a city of sanctuary. We have never, nor would we ever, set out to add to the pain of this conflict and would condemn completely and wholeheartedly anyone who engages in any form of antisemitism or Islamophobia. And we will support the community in identifying and tackling all instances of intolerance and hate. We're quite a small council in Preston, but we have prioritized and resourced anti-racism work, which is pretty rare, including working with Shor Racism and the Red Card. And with that, we've worked with several members of that organisation who are Jewish to tackle racism in our schools, including tackling and raising awareness of antisemitism. We are sought to recognise the impact events across the globe are having on our communities in Preston, all our communities. And I can only point to the words of the UN Secretary General in January in condemning violence against all innocent civilians. He said, "Nothing can justify the deliberate killing, injuring and kidnapping of civilians or the launching of rockets towards civilian targets." At the same time, the onslaught on Gaza by Israeli forces over these 100 days has unleashed wholesale destruction and levels of civilian killings at a rate that is unprecedented during my years as Secretary General. The vast majority of those killed are women and children. I want to say again, my door and councillor Khan's door is open to all faiths and communities and we will continue to condemn all attempts to create division and discord in our communities here in Preston. Dialogue and mutual respect are critical to ensure that horrific events unfolding in the Middle East do not sow the seeds of hate or division in our own communities. Thank you once again for the question.
Thank you. Mrs. Double, do you have a supplementary question?
In the last six months, I have received antisemitic abuse. Anti-Israel activists send hundreds of WhatsApp messages round Deepdale calling for my business to be boycotted. We know a student at UCLAN who told us, comes to our Shabbat, that no one sits next to her at the University of Central Lancashire because she's a dirty Jew. We don't go to town centre in the weekend when the marches are out because we don't feel safe. We don't tell our son to wear the kippah in Preston Centre. It's become a no-go zone for us, the very small community. What can you do to keep this vulnerable minority safe?
Thanks again, Savannah. No, obviously, it's really concerning what you're saying. I'll obviously speak to our chief executive. Obviously, we could approach the police about it. What we're trying to do is to ensure all communities are safe in Preston. And obviously, feelings are really, really intense. But that should never spill into any form of anti-racism or Islamophobia or any kind of hatred. So we have done things like put out statements. Obviously, we've had members of the Jewish and Muslim community take part in multi-faith events. We're working with the CSTP and Tell Mama to raise awareness of hate crime in this issue. We want to do more than that. It is just such an intense situation that we're local politicians, but we are trying to do what we feel is correct based on international values, equality and human rights. And this is why we're trying to work with all communities to do that and try to get consensus. Because I think we need to find a way of bringing consensus across all our communities with these things. So what I will do is I'll directly speak to the chief executive about that. And I'm really open to any conversation about any anxieties you have as a community. Because I understand how difficult it is in these times. And we'll do double our efforts to do what we can. So I say, let's just continue the dialogue and we'll keep working together to make things hopefully safer for the Jewish community in Preston.
Thank you. Now I would like to invite our second participant, Mrs. Amy Tronner, to ask her question, which is also directed to the leader. Again, Mrs. Tronner, you are entitled to ask a supplementary question once your original question has been answered as long as it relates to the original. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Regarding the March post on social media and the council's website regarding the proposed friendship with a town in Palestine, written by you as a leader and councillor Khan on behalf of Preston City Council, can you please tell me specifically which organisations and individuals were consulted prior to the posting?
Okay, thank you, Amy, very much for the question. Basically, what's happened is the discussion obviously takes place internally within our Labour group, but we were approached directly by members of the Muslim community about how we could support innocent people caught up in the conflict in Gaza. So we've had dialogue with them. We've also made initial contact with the Palestinian Friendship Association, I think. But we've also sought advice, and I think this is a really important point, for the multi-faith organisation called Faith Matters, which works across communities on these matters. But I just want to reiterate, this is the first stage of a process and we wish to engage with and hopefully gain consensus across all our communities and how we deal with these matters. That is always possible, but myself as leader and councillor Khan especially, we will do all we can to make sure that we try and get consensus in how we deal with this. Because I just reiterate, some of our councillors have received 100, 200 emails from people in the wars expressing concern about the conflicts in Gaza. And obviously, we need to listen to every single member of the community, obviously, elected representatives. And our response is solely motivated by humanitarian values as well. I think councillor Khan, Mr. Mayor, want to come in and follow this.
Councillor Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Amy, for the question. Just like to, in response to it, just to say that in a place like Preston, global events, as we've seen, can have a real impact on our communities. And we've seen that with the recent conflict, the impact this has had on the Jewish community and the Muslim community. We've heard already about the rise in antisemitism and also the rise in Islamophobia as well. I think when we were looking at the friendship arrangement, this was to create greater community cohesion, bringing our communities together more. That's all faiths, especially during this conflict and what has resulted from the conflict. And as Chair of the Faith Covenant, I again would reiterate my absolute commitment to supporting all faiths. I totally condemn any attacks on any faith, community, and offer my absolute support to any member of the community who is targeted. And earlier on, I know Savannah, it's all right to use your Christian name because we know each other quite well, I did want to come in at that point, Mr. Mayor, just to say that obviously, it's a hate crime and we do have reporting centres and I'm sure you're well aware about reporting. But it's something that, once again, our doors are open to have those further discussions on particular hate crime incidents that have taken place with yourself and let's look at those. So I just wanted to respond to that. So I'm currently working on the creation of a scheme to support discussions around peace and friendship with young people in a city. I would welcome the involvement of our Jewish community in this project to ensure that our young people have opportunities to engage in dialogue and friendship with those other faiths. And when we consulted and looked at what does a friendship arrangement mean for a council or a city, we sought, as councillor Brown has already said, advice and guidance from outside agencies. And it is about bringing communities together. It's about educating, raising awareness and having that exchange of dialogue, having that opportunity to bring children, women and other people from other cities, whoever we form a friendship with. So I would be saying, and I would welcome, if there is a city or a town and you would like to go forward with friendship in a town or city in Israel, it's not to say that we wouldn't consider it, you know, we would look at it. And it's also what's best for the city. And this is our main priority as we always look at things. What is going to be best for our city? What is in the best interest? And as you know, with Holocaust Memorial Day, we always consult with the Jewish community to see what could we do? What do we need to put on? Who do we need to involve? So going forward, if I could at this point, just to say that if for the next Holocaust Memorial Day, that maybe that might be something, friendship arrangement or involvement of schools in the projects that we have, and I could have further discussions with yourself on that. But I would just like to say that, you know, we will consider whatever you put forward and if it's justified, it's reasonable and it's within our remit of what we can commit to, then we would do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Khan. Mrs. Tronner, do you have a supplementary question? Yeah.
Preston city councillors are making choices to involve our city in Israeli and Palestinian politics by publishing statements on social media. And since these actions have an effect on our local communities and the wider UK communities, don't the councillors think that they should be consulting both those who support Israel's right to defend itself and those who do not support them prior to making statements on behalf of the people of Preston?
Yes, in principle, we do and we will. But obviously, we have internal democratic processes within the group around what is decided, around policies. So obviously, we need to obviously place weight on that as an authority. Have obviously our own decisions that we make as a group. And then obviously, when we do make those decisions, we do intend to consult. I just want to really reiterate, Amy, that this is obviously the first stage of a process. And the leader has quite eloquently just said how we do genuinely want to be inclusive because, you know, it is something that we've never experienced, this level of intensity. So we need to look after every single member of our community that's affected by it. So, you know, it's very difficult when we have very strong views around conflict, which you naturally do, to do that. But that is our intention and motivation, if we want to do that. And I just would welcome a conversation with you and other members of the Jewish community as well and the Jewish Leadership Council, who I spoke with earlier this year about how we do that. And I think we've got to find a way of bringing communities together. And our motivation as well is peace. If you look outside the town hall, we have the peace flag flying. We're not putting flags up on any side of the conflict. It's about peace. That's what we want to see. And so, yeah, so please get in contact with us and we'll have that conversation. That's something we want to do. But from our perspective, we really welcome it. So we can actually try to find a way forward on these matters.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs Tronner. Email responses to the questions asked today will be sent out in due course. That now concludes questions from members of the public today. Can I thank you for coming to the town hall today to utilise this facility? An officer now will escort you out. Thank you. Now we will take item number five, which is the questions to cabinet members, chairs of committees, representative of outside bodies. Members are entitled to ask a question of any cabinet member or chair of a committee within their portfolio or terms of reference. And only one supplementary question may be asked, provided it is relevant to the original question. We haven't received any written notification for questions for members appointed to serve on outside bodies. If anyone has any question to ask on the information items on the agenda, including the special urgency decisions, they should do so at this point as another opportunity will not be given when we reach those items. Thank you, councillor Darby.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is to councillor Khan, just building off what we've heard about, not wanting to pull on any threads, is you mentioned you might be prepared to look at potentially including an Israeli town alongside a Palestinian town, looking at building up a friendship arrangement with them or possibly going further towards twinning. We all know that twinning and friendship with other towns is really important in building that unity, peace, understanding and education. Everything you've both said so eloquently already. Will you be including it as an option quite early on to look at that alongside a Palestinian town?
I think, thank you for the question Neil. I think the important thing here is, as we mentioned earlier on, that we were approached by a community and a community that has suffered a great loss. And I didn't mention before, but we have a large Palestinian community as well. And it was because each individual family had lost four or more, up to 13 members of their family. So they came to us and this is, it's a request that we, we wouldn't be going out to any community. It's up to the community to come to us and say, this is something that we would like you to consider and look at. And as I mentioned before, it's looking at what is in the best interest. So I've put it out to the members of the Jewish community. And if they want to consider that, they want to put that forward, yes, we will look at it and see, you know, is it a particular town that fulfills? You know, we're in the very early stages of forming the friendship. We haven't yet looked at a town, we've got to look at compatibility, just area, demographics, et cetera, et cetera, and how feasible it will be. But it's a step forward to create that greater community cohesion. So the answer is yes, our door is open and we would consider it. But I can't, until we get that initial request coming forward, I can't really say what we would do. Okay.
Thank you, councillor Bell, please. Sorry. Yeah, go on councillor Darby.
Thank you, thank you for that answer. Supplementary question is also thinking about building these official friendships. Is, you might remember that we signed a friendship arrangement with a Ukrainian town towards the start of the conflict there. I wonder what contacts we've had with the Ukrainian town recently and what work we've done with that in terms of trying to build those bridges that we're also talking about potentially doing in the future with Palestine?
I don't have any information on that, but it's something that I could bring to the, you know, and provide that for you and get an update on it. I don't have any information, you know, that's how it is at the moment. Okay.
Thank you. Councillor Bell, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is for the deputy leader, please. Given the conduct of members on social media recently, would you please advise when the amendment to the constitution regarding the use of that hasn't been updated since 2017, originally put forward for the January meeting, would it be back to the state members to come?
I've no discussion about it since we withdrew the report. Given that we completely withdrew it, I thought it would go back to standards committee again. You might want to ask me what we thought was wrong with it. Happy to tell them. It does need stating. We didn't like what was put forward at time. In terms of members commenting on this issue, issuing situation in Gaza, I would encourage members to say how they feel, to ask questions, whoever, whether it's the government, Labour leadership or whoever they have questions for, what comments they have. I would tell them to keep it evidence-based and keep it hate-free. But councillors must not be stopped from giving their opinion and their feelings on very serious matters.
Any supplementary question? Thank you. Councillor Brooks, please.
My question is to councillor Khan. I'm just wondering, can you tell us a bit more about the preschool funded scheme that's, you know, put forward in the manifesto, sounds really good. So give us an idea of who's going to benefit, how many and roughly what areas are covered, that'd be really great.
Thank you councillor Brooks. Okay, no. Yeah, this is a long time coming really, this particular project or initiative from the council to provide or support breakfast provision in schools. Over the last two years, we've been looking at, I think one of the challenges has been is finding funding for it and then being inclusive of all schools, could we do that? So the officers were set a task to start looking at this and doing a bit of research and collecting the data through the help of the county council that has the education, obviously, area of work and has all the schools that provide preschool meals. So we finally have over the last few months, having done initial consultation with about 70 schools it was in the city. And we only had 20 responses back from that consultation. And we knew that there was a greater need than the 20 responses. So we dug a bit deeper down, did a bit of a deep dive into more detail and data from county on the number of schools, the number of children that were providing preschool meals. We also had to look in houses where we were going to fund and sustainability of this project as well. So we finally, having collected all the data on it, we identified six schools in particularly deprived wards. We had discussions with the schools on what their needs were. All the schools vary in their needs and their requests as what they were wanting. Some were already have breakfast provision in the school, provided by organisations outside like Kellogg's and Magic Breakfast and so forth. So we took all that into account and then we found that we had a bit of an underspend and £79,000, I think it is, around about £80,000. So we couldn't obviously cascade that out for schools. So six schools have been identified that have come forward, that really want this added support and provision in the schools. And it will be run for 38 weeks from September and it'll be targeted as well. So we leave that to the schools to decide. Obviously, since the cost of living crisis, what we've had is we've got added families that are really in need of that support of having breakfast provision for their schools because financially they found it very difficult. So these will be the sort of targeted individuals or children from the schools. The costing, as I said, is about £80,000. We're looking at an exit strategy, looking at long-term sustainability. We have said to the schools that there's no expectations, they don't think that this is going to go on. We've got to look at this and we've got to find external funding, you know, during the course of this programme running. There is a greater detail of, comprehensive detail around each school, the number of pupils it will be serving. And I think in total, we're talking about well over 20,000 children that will benefit from this programme. So as I said, you know, the schools that have come together and been wanting this are really thankful for the funding that's been given. I'd just like to add that some of the funding, because each individual school is quite unique in its needs and what its requests were and how they're going to utilise the funding. So some of it will be for breakfast provision, some of it will be to buy in, some staffing, towards staffing costs. Because that's the greatest challenge that schools have, is that it's to pay for staffing and to get staff to actually run the breakfast club or the breakfast support or provision for the children. So, yeah, as I said, we're not building in expectations from schools, but we, you know, we will look at, see if, if it's been productive, it's been really beneficial, then, you know, obviously we will look forward to looking at where we can source some funding for this to continue with the programme. But it's very much needed in the current climate, thanks, thank you.
Have you any supplementary question? Thank you, any more questions? No, so item number six, the report on homelessness prevention grant 2024/25. Councillor Khan, I believe you are moving this report?
I am, Mr Mayor, if I can find it. Well, it's really an acceptance of the homeless prevention grant funding. And I can't remember the full amount of it, yes. Sorry, Mr Mayor, I'm trying to get the page. I wasn't expecting some questions that have been fired at me today, so there we go. So, yeah, the council has been awarded the Ring Fence Homeless Prevention Grant of £341,000 for 2024/25. Obviously it's by the Department of Leveling Up, Housing and Communities. This is towards the cost of tackling homelessness and the extra burdens on the Homeless Reduction Act places on the councils. So it's really acceptance of this funding to, you know, for the council to undertake the work that they're currently doing. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, is there a seconded? Are there any amendments? Do you want to speak councillor Brown? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstention? Thank you, Iskari. Item number seven is a report on the acceptance of household support funding 2024/25. Councillor Khan, are you moving the report?
I am, Mr Mayor, thank you. Yeah, again, this report seeks council to approve and accept further government funding for the Household Support Fund. And it's by the Department of Workers and Pensions. And this gets passported via Lancashire County Council. So we don't have the exact amount that will be allocated to Preston City Council at the moment. But we want to be accepting the funding prior to this and based on the amounts that the council has received in the past, which is through a funding revenue budget increase for 2024/25 of £650,000 to be spent between April 24 and 30th of September 24. So it's really, it's already in place, but we haven't got the monies yet. And there is a great need, as we've seen in the past, that the Household Support Fund has greatly benefited families, families in need. And without this, we can see that there's going to be real difficulties and challenges, not only for the council, but obviously the families that we support through this funding. So we just hope that going forward, that the government can look at sustainable funding for councils in this area, especially with the Household Support Fund continuing. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Khan. Is there a seconded? Are there any amendments? Do you want to come back on this councillor Brown? No? All right, if that's the case, can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstention? Thank you, Iskari. Item number eight is a report on the planning service, free income and investment. Councillor Abzal, will you be moving the report?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report responds to the legislative amendments to increase planning application fees in England. The government expects the fee increase to result in increased investment in the planning service and lead to improved performance. As a result, a funded budget increase is required to include this additional income and expenditure into the planning service budget. This report outlines proposals for the use of the additional income and also provides an update on the situation with planning appeals and performance since the last report to council in January 2017, when the government last increased planning fees. I would like to offer my full support to the recommendations set out in this report. Service has been under-resourced for a number of years. Whilst the report informs members that performance exceeds government standards, this has not been achieved with the relentless hard work of officers, very careful management of the team and extension of time agreements when processing applications, meaning that application targets are met but at a slower pace. This, of course, has been noted by the government and in a bid to accelerate the planning service across the country, the government intends to introduce new performance standards to speed up decision-making. Should these government proposals become legislation, the extra resources outlined in this report should provide invaluable to improve the efficiency of the database system, to enable officers to speed up the processing of applications and reduce delays at the end of the decision-making process to issue decisions on time or without an extension of time agreement. Furthermore, the additional enforcement post will enable the team to tackle enforcement and post-permission matters more efficiently and effectively, which has proved unmanageable for one officer over the last five years due to the high number of cases received each year. The extra permanent resource will prevent the reliance on the wider team for completing the initial investigations, which in turn will free up more capacity for officers to accelerate decision-making. Lastly, but by no means least, the principal officer post in the policy team will reduce the burden and pressure on the policy team leader to assist with strategic and complex sites and provide the seamless delegation of tasks across the team to assist in the timely preparation of the new local plan. I therefore offer my full support and I would urge my fellow members to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Abzal. Is there a seconded? Yeah. Yeah, councillor Rollinson.
This scheme is an admittance by the government that they've cut council funding way too deeply, that councils are unable to deliver. that councils are unable to deliver the services. And eventually, they've realised that, you know, certain services need backfilling and they've allowed us to raise planning fees to make the money up rather than the government giving us instead, which is a shocking state of affairs. But obviously, we're happy that we can have a better service for the people of Preston. Enforcement services have been hit very hard by public sector cuts. And this is just one part of it. Others still need addressing. But this just shows how difficult things have got for local government.
Thank you. Is there any more questions or anything on this? Any amendments? Councillor Abzal, do you want to come back? If that's the case, can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, Iskari. Item number nine is a report on members allowance scheme 2023-24 and 2024-25. Councillor Rollinson, will you be moving this report?
Thank you, yes. Lib group are proposing that we accept the recommendations by the independent panel, that that becomes the scheme for 23-24 and 24-25. Until panel meet again, recommend anything further. Lots of members are uncomfortable approving their own pay rises without a national scheme. This is what we're stuck with. So we use the independent panel. They work for us, they compare with other authorities. Over the years, we've fallen behind at times. The average deferrals allowances for many years during austerity have had very small rises. This proposes a rise in line with staff pay, which we've done a few times now. Panel seem to want to see what the pay rise is next time for the staff before they'll approve, before they recommend it for us. And that's fine, there's some other things they want to look at too. And that's fine too, with no objection to them looking at any of those things. Just accept their recommendations as an independent view.
Is that seconded? Thank you. Any more speaker on this? Any amendments? Do you want to come back, councillor Rollinson? If that's the case, can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstention? Thank you, Iskari. Item number 10 is the notification of changes to the membership of committees. Are there any changes to be reported? No? Thank you. Item number 11 is the leaders' report. Councillor Brown, do you wish to speak on the report which is for noting only?
Just for noting, just for noting, thank you.
Thank you. Can we now note the item? Show of hands, please. Thank you. Item number 12 is special urgency decisions and there are two to report, details of which were included in your agenda pack. Councillor Brown, do you have anything to say on these decisions which are for noting only? No? Okay, thank you. The next meeting of the council is the annual meeting, which will take place at 6:00 PM on Wednesday 15th of May 2024 in the town hall, Preston, beginning with the mayor making. The remainder of the business will then take place on the following day, Thursday 16th of May 2024 at 2:00 PM in the town hall. Item number 14, exclusion of the press and public. Now, we need to consider passing the following resolution. That the public be excluded from this meeting during consideration of the following items of business on the grounds that there is likely to be disclosure of exempt information, which is described in the paragraphs of Schedule 12A to the Local Government Act 1972, which is specified against the headings to the item, and that in all the circumstances of the case, the public interest in maintaining the exemption outweighs the public interest in disclosing it. Are you all happy to agree the exemption and move to part B? Show of hands, please. Thank you.